Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council for the 3rd of December. Hard to believe it's December already, but welcome. We want to let you know that we also treasured the memory of our late President George H.W. Bush, and we are providing a sort of a guest registry book in the back of the room that will ultimately be sent to the Presidential Library. So if anybody has an opportunity and would like to leave some sort of a memory of the President or that point in time, or if anybody was a point of light, then you're perfectly welcome to do that. So Stacy, we'll ask you to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here, thank you very much. We also want to welcome the people who will be viewing us on cable, or the Internet, or whatever, and we'll ask Stacy to read the playback schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, December 5th at 9:00 a.m., and Sunday, December 9th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy of this meeting is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. We always begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and with an invocation. Tonight's invocation will be brought to us by Pastor Phil Cooley from Cordova Neighborhood Church. And, hang on, and our Pledge of Allegiance first will be led by Mike Spice, retired Rancho Cordova firefighter. And so if you'll all stand and then remain standing, you are invited to for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its essence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike.
Council, staff, public, thank you for giving me the opportunity to pray over this meeting. Let us do that. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this council, Lord, and their willingness to lead our community. We pray that you will bless them, that you will give them the wisdom that is necessary to lead well, you will give them the ability that they need, Father. I pray, in this season of holiday, that you would give them rest as they have opportunity to take a break. And, Lord, I lift up their family and their friends who also work hard as they are here. Would you bless them, Father? We give this meeting to you. We pray that the business that needs to be accomplished is done so well. We pray all of this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. And if anybody hasn't made the obvious connection, anybody who's new to Rancho Cordova, Philip, of course, is a longtime resident, whose dad was our colleague and is now serving us well in the Assembly, so, thank you. It's great to see you. We're going to go into presentations, and we're going to begin with our Community Enhancement Fund presentations, so we'll turn it over to Stacy Delaney. While Stacy's coming up, let me remind everybody that we do have speaker cards in the back of the room, and, of course, there is an opportunity for public comment, and so for anybody who hasn't yet signed up and handed their speaker card to Stacy Lightner, you're welcome to do that at this point. Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. This evening, we will be presenting ceremonial checks to several organizations that were approved for grant funding through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. These projects and programs support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including education, entertainment, civic engagement, quality of life, and many others, while continue to make our city a safe and inviting place to live, work, and have fun. Mayor and councilmembers, please come down and join these groups as they receive their ceremonial checks. So the first check being presented this evening is for River City Christian to organize and operate their crossover basketball league. The crossover basketball league invites students in Rancho Cordova to participate in a co-ed league that will run from late January 2019 through May 2019. This program benefits residents by providing increased opportunities for students to engage in sports, learn teamwork, and develop leadership skills. Fred Hammer and Danny Langdon are the ones accepting the check for $13,000. The second check this evening is for the Mills One Club to fund the repairs and update the safety features on the historic Mills One fire engine. This will preserve a local historical resource that is used in parades, on display, in historical celebrations, and other events here in Rancho Cordova. Michael Spice and Doug Leard are accepting the check for $15,000. The third check this evening is for Symphony de Oro for the purpose of funding equipment and other expenses, which will enhance their ability to provide musical offerings in the city. Symphony de Oro enhances both the residence experience as well as visitors, and we can enjoy high-quality music and further the city's goal of becoming an arts destination. Exactly. Lorraine Crozier is accepting the check for $19,280. The fourth check this evening is for Cordova Lancers Leaders and Legends for the continuation of the Mentors at Cordova High program. The program provides mentoring services and group activities to students in Rancho Cordova to help them improve academic performance, gain skills to overcome challenges, and engage in community service projects. Conrad Mayer, as well as mentors and mentees from the program, are accepting the check for $60,000. Okay. I think it's okay. So the fifth and final check this evening is for Folsom Cordova Unified School District, and it's funding two different programs, the After School Education and Safety Program, as well as the Family Engagement Summer Academy that will take place in 2019. Both of these programs provide enhanced educational opportunities for students, and the summer program also provides opportunities for student parents, as well as guardians, to participate as well. Linda Burkholder is accepting the check for $60,000. So I'm going to take her check temporarily, and then Linda's going to stay up here because she's going to receive a proclamation as well.
I don't like holding a mic and doing this, so this makes my life easier. Okay. So we have this proclamation here, "Given in recognition of Linda Burkholder on December 3rd, 2018. Whereas Folsom Cordova Director of Family Engagement and Support Services, Linda Burkholder, received an Inspirational Leadership Award from the California Department of Education for her commitment and contributions to expanded learning programs. Linda oversees the Family Engagement and Support Services for Folsom Cordova Unified School District, which helps children, students, families be successful by connecting them with needed services, resources, and resources. This includes information and referral services, the Summer Academy, the Safety Center at Cordova Lane, and the After School Education and Safety Program. And, for almost two decades, Linda has supported the dedicated staff members of the After School Education and Safety ACEs Program. The program serves more than 500 students at school sites in Rancho Cordova. Linda also directs the school district's Family Engagement Summer Academy, which offers, at no cost, locally-funded four-week STEM enrichment programs for elementary students. Parents are also allowed to enroll as co-learners alongside their children. Both the ACEs and Summer Academy programs are supported in part by the Community Enhancement Fund," which you just saw the check for. Linda Burkholder was presented with the Inspirational Leadership Award on October 25th, 2018, by State Superintendent of Public Instruction Tom Torleksen at the California Department of Education Headquarters in Sacramento. And the Inspirational Leadership Award recognizes individuals that have made a significant contribution to the California Expanded Learning Field. California's Expanded Learning Programs are an integral part of young people's education, engaging them in year-round learning opportunities that prepare them for college, career, and life. This year, Linda was selected by her fellow school district administrators as Folsom Cordova Unified School District Administrator of the Year. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize Linda Burkholder for her outstanding leadership skills and contributions to the ACEs Program and the Family Engagement Summer Academy. And our mayor has signed it and put her seal of approval on here, so congratulations.
Thank you so much. I think we're going to come right over here. Okay, well, this one's bittersweet for me, because I couldn't miss this person deeply. Rebecca. This is Rebecca Garrison. Whereas, the City of Rancho Cordova recognizes Rebecca Garrison of the 50-Carter Transportation Management Association, the TMA, serving since October 1999. Where did the time go? Whereas, the 50-Carter TMA is a private, public, nonprofit association which works to improve mobility along the Highway 50-Carter in the unincorporated areas of Sacramento, El Dorado County, Spolsom, and the City of Rancho Cordova. And whereas Rebecca Garrison is retiring after 18 years of successful leadership as Executive Director of the TMA. Whereas, during those years, Rebecca Garrison communicated with TMA board members, 50-Carter commuters, commute coordinators, special committees, task forces, elected officials, and staff to reduce traffic, improve air quality, and improve the quality of life in the region, and had everybody in the palm of her hand. Anybody who knows or knows that. And whereas Rebecca Garrison has worked with the city to achieve bicycle-friendly community status by providing bicycle education for adults and students, fostered a successful bike-to-school program at two city schools, and promoted special bicycle events to city residents, especially during May is Bike Month, and organized or participated in this enormous ride from Discovery Park all the way into the state Capitol, which is an absolute highlight of May is Bike Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize Rebecca for her commitment to the community, leadership of the TMA, and dedication in making Rancho Cordova a better place to live, work, and play. And we're going to miss you. We know Mom will be thrilled. She's going to South Mississippi. And I'm going to miss you guys so much. Thank you. Would you like to say anything? I don't think so. I would just like to say thank you, and I really will miss you guys. Thank you so much.
Can I say something? As testament to Linda's comment about "in the palm of your hand," that I had to mix smoothies four times in a year with a bicycle that had a blender attached to the back tire, and I had to make smoothies for kids that walked and biked to school. And do a very embarrassing commercial, but I'm happy to do it. So, thank you for all your service. It's been a lot of fun working with you.
And thank you for your service.
We could go on a while with the things we've had to do. Rusty Dupre and I, and Steve Miklos, had to do a bicycle race from the base of the Folsom Bluffs up to their city park.
Ooh, uphill.
Uphill, the whole way, three of us.
She was smart not to ask me to do that.
Yeah, it was brutal. I've done a lot of cycling. I've never done anything as hard as that.
I did.
Because we couldn't lose. Rancho Cordova was not going to lose that. We didn't, by far. We didn't. I nearly lost my life, but we did not lose. And numerous other adventures.
Yes, you all were good sports.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Love you. Are you sure?
Pictures to prove you were here. Oh, that's right. No worries.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. We are presenting a special proclamation tonight to a developer member of our Rancho Cordova business community, and prior to giving the proclamation, we wanted to provide some background and also some visuals, because it's a really unique honor that we're recognizing. Tonight, we have with us representatives of Basin Street Properties, which is a prominent Northern California and Northern Nevada real estate investor and developer. In January 22nd of this year, as you can see denoted on this slide, Basin Street acquired our Prospect Green campus, which is located here right across the street from City Hall. It is a five-building, 518,000-square-foot, 33-acre campus, and very important to our Rancho Cordova business community. Immediately upon acquiring the campus, they set out to make some very cool improvements, and that's what we wanted to show you this evening. So so far, in the 11 short months of owning the property, they have instituted bike sharing, created a volleyball court, enhanced their walking paths, which is one of my favorite parts. It looks like it should be one of the smallest on the slide, but it's really fun, and I encourage everyone to take a walk over there, because as you walk along the walking path, they have markers along the path to compare the laps around the campus to different landmarks around the world, including the Space Needle, the Eiffel Tower, et cetera. So it's really cool, and it adds a really unique personality to the campus. In addition, they have installed new picnic areas with really cool, modern seating. They've enhanced their café with a really great patio, and expanded their fitness center, which, as you can see in the photo, rivals any hotel or gym fitness center. The White Rock Campus, it was initially designed and developed by David Taylor as a campus for E-Trade, a little bit of Rancho Cordova history, and now it houses some of our largest employers, including NEC, Liberty Mutual, and others. So we'd like to take a moment to honor them this evening, because enhancing our office core is one of our primary economic development initiatives. As we all know, we're the region's primary employment sub-center with 75,000 employees. This area in particular is very important to us. The area that this campus sits within, one square mile, houses over 20,000 employees. So every improvement that we make there has maximum impact. So tonight, we are sing "Thank You." I would like to invite up Frank Maranello, VP of Development with Basin Street, as well as Elaine Nelson, Regional Manager with Basin Street, to accept the proclamation and hopefully say a few words.
On behalf of the City Council, I'm happy to present a proclamation which has been duly signed, witnessed, and sealed by our mayor. So congratulations for your great work.
We appreciate it.
We look forward to many years of partnership with you and the community. We take each other very seriously, and we're happy you do the same with your property. So if you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
I'll make it very brief. Thank you very much for inviting us to your community, and we are going to do everything we can to retain those tenants that were mentioned and attract new tenants as well to some of our vacant space, which is dwindling very quickly, I think, in large part due to the projects that we've implemented at the property. But less about us and more about, on behalf of all of Basin Street, how important and how nice it is to hear it from you about these improvements that we're making. So it says a lot about what you think about the business community, makes us want to acquire additional property and do great things and work with you all, and hopefully be a partner with you going into the future. So thank you very much for the recognition, and we really appreciate it.
Well, we hope you're successful in that goal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so now we're going to turn it over to Albert Stricker.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the city this year has successfully completed over $20 million of infrastructure projects, and we're on course to deliver another $20 million in infrastructure projects next year. In order to manage a program like that, we need a really strong leader, and I'm really pleased to present to you this evening Edgar Medina, who is a new senior engineer that is joining our team. He's a very seasoned and experienced individual, has experience at small agencies, public and private, both in California and outside of California. Very talented new engineer that I'm pleased to announce has joined our team in the last month, has come up to speed extremely quickly and very impressively, and we expect a lot of great things with his leadership on our team.
Super. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. Happy to be here. I'm very excited to help deliver quite a dynamic capital improvement program and exciting projects for the city. As Director Albert Stricker mentioned, I do have a lot of experience with small and very big municipalities, so I'm excited to be here and help deliver the next round of projects.
Well, we appreciate that, Edgar. There are several people in the audience tonight for whom infrastructure is their favorite topic, and they're going to be pleased to meet you, and I'm sure they're all going to want to shake your hand and tell you exactly what you should be working on.
Yeah, you might. They're right over there, and if you've already gotten your business card, I would just give it to them now.
Well, I'd be happy to talk to them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thanks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Maria Neestad with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. I am here this evening to introduce a new member of our team who will be working in the Community Engagement Division with Loriann Olm and helping her to expand that important program here in the City of Rancho Cordova. I'd like to introduce Matt Beuland. He will be the Community Engagement Assistant in the Community Engagement Division. Matt grew up in the Sacramento region and has always had a passion for the environment as well as community engagement. Over the last eight years, he has worked with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, connecting trees and their many benefits with communities in the region, including right here in Rancho Cordova. In fact, over the last year, he has worked directly with the city to bring our Trees Program to this community. We'd like to welcome Matt. We're very excited to be bringing on someone who has such a strong foundation in community engagement. We're very excited to work with him, and I'm going to turn it over and let him have a few words.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm excited to be here. I've been kind of on a long journey, and trees are really kind of what brought me here. But over that time, I've really found a passion for connecting with communities and really kind of improving and building that, you know, what's really important for cities and communities. So I'm really excited to join you. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to getting going, so, thank you.
Welcome, Matt. And as we just told Edgar, all the same people who are here tonight are also some of our most engaged residents, as you probably know already. So again, if you have business cards and they don't have them already, then you're probably going to want to hand them out. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We are now at the point of public comment. I know Stacy has speaker cards. Citizens wishing to address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda have that opportunity at this point, and we would ask that you take three minutes and tell us what's on your minds. And remember, please, that items that are not on the agenda can't really be discussed tonight, but we will either find you a staff person to assist or schedule something that needs to be, needs further work, schedule that for a future agenda item. So Stacy, who are our speakers tonight?
I have four speaker cards so far. The first one is Pamela Bradley. If you would please come forward and introduce yourself. Following Pamela will be Derald Langwell.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Budge and City Councilmembers. My name's Pam Bradley, and I'm a volunteer with HARP, the Homeless Assistance Resource Team, and tonight I just wanted to give you a brief update of where we're at in our upcoming shelter. So the winter shelter is scheduled to begin on Friday, December 30th, and our hope is to provide shelter through the month of March. So far, we have the first five weeks covered, and we have two weeks in February and one week in March, but we are still in need of four more churches to help us with this effort during our shelter season. We've been actively recruiting since last summer, recruiting pastors of churches here in Rancho Cordova to assist with this need, and in some cases, we're still waiting for a response. I also would like to invite each one of you to come either to our intake site or come to one of our shelters, one of the churches, to have dinner and meet some of your constituents that are, because of life circumstances, are facing homelessness. Further, I just wanted to mention that because of the rising cost of rent, some families are being displaced from their homes, and this trend continues, and as it does, we are going to continue to see more homeless in Rancho Cordova. So my question for you all at City Council is, what are your plans to help solve this issue? issue? What can be done about having more affordable housing in our community? And what kind of transitional housing can be provided for those who are ready and willing to climb out of the plight of homelessness? So I thank you for your consideration and concern about this serious issue and how this affects all of our community. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Darryl.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and council members. I'm very concerned about what I saw earlier this evening. In this country, we're supposed to have a separation of church and state, and I watched the city present a church with monies collected through taxation. The council can color this any way they wish, but in my view, this is in direct contradiction to the separation doctrine.
Thank you, Darryl. Adam, would you like to talk with him later? Okay. Thank you. Next.
Next speaker card is Stan Jones, and following Stan will be Mary Nessel.
I was puttering around the house, so that's why I don't have a tie on. I suddenly realized it was already 5:30. So, I know that we're aware of this path called Grantline Road, which will be some connector between south of the city to east of the city, connecting Highway 99 to US 50. And I would like to, I know that I'm not going to say anything, I'm just extremely brief because I'm not saying anything you don't already know, and I'm sure is in the county plan as well as the city's plan, but I would encourage us not to lose the vision of limited access to this feeder, because if you need examples of this, Highway 84 that connect in San Jose and Santa Clara County, connecting Highway 101 to 280 is a wonderful road. It has limited access. I drove on it two weeks ago. And in Santa Clara County, I don't know if you have examples out here, but there are things called expressways and parkways streets. They elevate them a little bit in Santa Clara County, but they're limited access, like one exit per mile and so forth. The idea being to keep traffic flowing, and I'm sure that we want in our traffic plans to be able to have that traffic plan between 50 and 99, although sometimes we can let little things interfere with that, allowing a little bit. I noticed that individual properties wanting adjacent to Grantline Road, and so if every property there has a direct access onto Grantline Road, you lose that feature. So that's my comment there. Also, in the obituaries, I don't know if you're aware, back, Mayor Budge is acknowledging, before we were a city and in our first election, when we were voted and we voted in council members, one of the people, there was about, somewhere around 15 people who actually ran in that election.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. That's wonderful. So, in the obituaries yesterday was one of those candidates, Aubrey Stone, who is African-American. He was, he served as Chair or CEO of the Black, California Chamber, Black Chamber of Commerce. His wife also worked with feeding programs for youth in Rancho, including in the area of Rancho Cordova. So I mentioned that because he was a person who was part of our history, active in promoting community. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you for reminding us, Dan.
Mary Nessel.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Mary Nessel. I live in Cordova Meadows. I just noticed this evening when I got here and read the agenda about the tax dollars, Measure H funds that were used for River City Christian Church. I feel the same as Darryl does, that our taxes should not be used for any kind of church activities, and to make it, in my opinion, 10 times worse is that the conflict of interest associated with that, because it's a church that one of our council members belongs to. And we've spoken at this council meeting before, when there was some discussion about donations for an Easter egg hunt for that particular church, that we should not be donating our tax dollars to a church. And I think it's completely improper, and I'm very, very upset that it happened.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else?
I do not have any other speaker cards at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are going to move into council reports. Donald.
Well, I was going to end with this, but I'll start with it. Thank you for recognizing Mr. Stone. My experience with him was long before I was ever on this council, but then even when I ran the first time, we did a lot of phone banking out of his office, and then he lent us space and other support, but I consider him a friend and a mentor and worked with him a lot in my last, not my last job, job before that, in coordinating my company's participation in their annual conference and a lot of other things. He was a great guy and a great mentor of mine. So hopefully, we'll be able to adjourn in his memory. That being said, there's some things coming along with the Air District around funding and additional unfunded mandates that have been basically shoved into the expectations of local districts without any funding for them, and so there's going to be some probable looking at fees and some other ways of funding the organization going forward, so probably more to talk about in the first quarter of next year. But we had a budget meeting this past week to start looking at different options. Another issue is that federal EPA funding and a lot of other things are looking like they're very much in peril with this administration. Thank you to those who came to see me get my 40 Under 40 Award, and congratulations, Linda, on the, we were getting recognized all over the region on the same night last week, but it was a great honor to be there.
And David, actually.
Oh, David was, I'm sorry. I wasn't there.
We have two Big Wheels.
The one thing I will say is Christopher Cobaldin came up to me and asked me how many people in the city were getting awards in Rancho, and I said, "Me," and he goes, "Well, we have six in West Sac," so maybe we need to pick it up next year, so. But maybe some friendly rivalries around there. But yeah, the first thing, he came up to me and he asked me, "How many people from your city?" And I said, "Like, that work there?" "No, no, it's just people that live there," because, and then he told me, I want to say they had five or six.
Gosh, at our awards ceremony, I guess there were zero from West Sacramento.
Well, there you go. He made sure to sit down, like, front row, and every time a West Sac person came up, he would like yell very loudly, "West Sac!" So, we need to work on it. I had the opportunity, along with Cyrus and a handful of other folks here, to attend the, is it the First Annual? Is that what we're going to call it? The First Neighborhood Engagement Dinner, where they got all of the neighborhoods that Loriann's been working with together, and the caterer did an amazing job. One, because there were some dietary needs and issues that needed to be addressed, and she did a fantastic job of putting that together. But what was really moving about it, I will say, and I know there were points where Loriann started tearing up, but even members of the audience, people that came there that had been working in Lincoln Village and a few other places, as they started to tell their stories, they started to tear up, talking about the experiences that they had had there. And so the impact that you're making and our new staff that are going to get to work on that is really amazing. I mean, I'll be honest with you, there are a lot of things I'm really proud of working on and being a part of at this city. I don't think there's anything more important than what Loriann's doing. The type of work that we're doing to empower our neighbors and our community to be leaders in their own community and to choose what they want to work on in their community, I think is some of the most powerful things that we're doing in this city. It's really interesting, too, and hopefully Cyrus, you don't take offense by this, but I loved this story of Ron, he was sharing a story with, it was actually, it was in Yosemite at a conference where Cyrus, he's an engineer, he believes that, you know, you start, you start a road, you finish a road, and you move on, right? And I think you would ask him at one point, like, "When are we done with this?" Right? And it's kind of like, at some point, you've got to, you know, go back and repave and do a lot of the things, like, this kind of work, like, it'll never be completed. It'll just keep getting better. And it's just, it's really, really exciting to see how far you've brought it and how far you've come. To think back, like, when I started here and I was having this conversation with Ted about, like, you know, or actually, no, I think I actually started, David, with you, when you said, we had some people here from VSP, and they had just, you know, rehabbed somebody's home, and he goes, "There should be a nonprofit that does that." And it's like, there is a nonprofit that does that. And literally, a few months later, we get hit up by Citibank to go out to Soilborne and to see, you know, they'll commit the money if we can find people, and she couldn't believe that there was somebody that would coordinate all the, all she had to do was find people, right? And that was really what her role was, was just to do volunteer coordinating. And I mean, you've grown so much in the last few years in what you've done and the kind of impacts that you're making in our community, so thank you to you and everyone on your team. Okay, with that being said, tree lighting was awesome. The setup this year was the best we've ever had it, putting Santa in the back so that you had plenty of room for the line, was great. The Frozen characters were amazing. I will just say this out loud, I think the fireworks show was a little bit too big, and we were a little bit too close, because you could, you shouldn't be able to feel the fireworks hitting you. That's, you want to feel it in your chest, not on your head, and in your hair. But besides that, it was a great event. It was the best one we've ever had. I think this was the first year that we had that tree, right? This new tree, this new electrical tree that we bought? Was this the first year that we did it, or did we do it last year?
No, I think this is still.
This was the first, yeah, this was the first one. Everything came off great. It was, it was a really great time for my family, and my father even came out for the first year and enjoyed it with the family, so it was, it was a lot of fun, and kudos to everybody that was involved. But if we, if we need to make the fireworks show just a little bit smaller, I'm fine with it.
Garrett.
All right. What hair? Just joking. I'm sorry, that's messed up.
He's got lots of hair. It's just in a different place.
It's not what?
It's in a different place.
Oh. Christmas tree was amazing, Frozen characters. My boys, of course, the lady was like, "Hey, you want to take pictures of them?" And I have two boys, and they're like, "No!" And then they tried to tackle Santa, which was the best. So we got up there. I loved that event. I always loved that event. It's great. So I went to the SSCA Joint Powers Authority. For everyone that wants to know, it's going to improve how we build and how we're able to move conservation around and be able to basically make it easier for us to build and take care of wildlife at the same time. Things that I, of note, is we were able to get a million-dollar grant. We're buying over 700 new acres, and we already have 403 acres of wetlands that we already own for that, and so, and we are now designing on a budget, and we've got the first director, we're looking for a director of that group, so I've heard that this was an impossible task that took over 25 years, and it sounds like I got in right at the right time to put my stamp on it and then get out. So I'm very excited about that. I met with Carrie and our homeless navigator, because I would love to see the city get to a functional zero, and so I'm looking at what that's, what that entails and kind of what it means to be a functional zero city, which means that, just for everyone out there, functional zero means I want to take our vet population, our homeless vet population, and be able to have enough housing for them, even though you can't force someone into a home, you can say that if they would like to come out of the cold, that we would have that home there. I went in to the Capital Regional Broadband Discussion. It's a lot to talk about the cable and what the industry is going to do and really reaching out to the more rural areas, and as we get farther to that, and what that's going to engage, and then you've got some cool apps that are able to test the speed, so I always find that interesting. I know Anil is not here, but Anil and I, we've been trying to get cybersecurity and what kind of jobs in the cyber industry we can bring into Rancho Cordova. That's really big for me, so I gave a speech, and I basically tried to poach a bunch of businesses that happen to be at the cybersecurity, since I was sitting on a group about that. And finally, the Christmas mall was this weekend. It's great to see 1,000 vets, people that come from other countries, and be able to take care of them and get them gifts and take over, and it's just amazing to see that kind of outpouring of good faith to individuals. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, along with you, we were honored to be Big Wheels on the 50 Corridor. I thought that was a great event.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Yes, thank you, Rebecca, who was here earlier. I was really hoping to be awarded a Big Wheel in the process, particularly one adult-sized. I understand.
Oh, that would be fun.
I know. I understand they exist, so, you know.
There's a children's museum exhibit that we need to get.
If Santa's listening, yeah, there might be a, or maybe a Fourth of July parade kind of event.
A large Big Wheel where Donald and David race.
With fireworks, up a hill.
I'm starting to rewrite the city's standard liability waiver as we speak.
Isn't there a bike company in town that builds a large tricycle?
I don't know, but we do have a specialty bicycle company.
We do.
I think they make a three-wheel.
Maybe we can order up a Big Wheel. A really Big Wheel. In any case, it was, it was nice to see the city honored through Linda and I, probably for our longevity, along with other transportation rolls along the years. I attended the Symphony d'Or Christmas Concert at Cordova High School on Friday night. That was in, you were there as well, Madam Mayor. That was an incredible concert. They filled the place up, they filled it up with people, with music, with goodwill, with creativity. There is no other concert quite like this. I would strongly, strongly encourage you to go. You not only hear symphonic music, you hear a great vocalist, and you have a lot of fun, and you get to sing along with it. There are kids up on stage acting as reindeers at one point. Santa makes an appearance. There weren't fireworks, but there was snow, and I suspect next year, there will be fireworks or some sort of pyrotechnics. Not in KP, this is at Cordova High's Performing Arts Center. I suspect there will be indoor pyrotechnics there as well. That just seems like the natural evolution of the event, so.
Pyrotechnics.
They did, they did a wonderful job, and we're really proud to have Symphony d'Or Rancho Cordova representing us in the region. Thanksgiving tree lighting, I thought the fireworks were awesome. I don't know, Cyrus and I both have firsthand experience in setting off fireworks, very, very close range, so maybe we ought to sign you up for one of those experiences. What was yours called, Cyrus? What did they call it this year at the year's show?
The Wall of Fire.
Yes, The Wall of Fire. The Wall of Fire, I think, I don't know if they call.
It sees the wall of fire all over town.
I, yeah, you feel it, definitely. I set it off a couple of years ago when they were doing a December 7 simulation. It was, it was amazing. I've also lit fireworks manually, which is another fun experience. It's a little more impressive than feeling the heat of them. You sort of get pushed by them. But I, our, our Christmas tree lighting is sort of like the concert I just described. You know, there's nothing like that in the region, and it's not just the fireworks. It's everything else that's going on there. It was so well laid out, you see so many community organizations, and so many kids volunteering, I mean, dozens of kids volunteering at that event to make it work for hundreds of other kids. So, very proud of the community council for pulling that together, as well as, I don't know, 20 or, 20 or more other community organizations are involved.
Thank you, David. Bob.
I was trying to think when I set off the fireworks, but it was on the Fourth of July, and we still had fireworks going on in the football field. So it's been a while, but letting me go out there and set off one of them, and it's quite an experience, that's for sure. The tree lighting, yes, definitely, that was fantastic. My three-year-old granddaughter just watched two ladies up there who were singing about music from Frozen, and she knows most of that music, I think, but she had a good time with that. So it was a wonderful event all the way across, I think, with the food, with the kids, and all the music and everything that was in the tree lighting. And fireworks were great, a little loud, but they were great, so we'll see how that goes next year. The Make the Veterans Village is moving right along, and I'm really glad about that, because that means we'll be able to get veterans off the street into the homes and into the transitional part also on the two-story building. So permanent housing and transitional, both, to get them off the street, and I'm looking forward to that, because we've been working on that for years. So I'm glad that it's making the progress that it is. Linda reminded me of the 21 candidates that were running for the City Council in 2002, when the people voted on becoming a city or not, and there were 21 candidates for the five. One of the 21 candidates was against becoming a city, which was kind of interesting, I thought, but he wasn't elected, so.
He actually came in last.
Anyway, Aubrey Stone was one of those, but you weren't there, so. Aubrey Stone was one of the candidates who really helped. Anyway, Aubrey Stone was one of those. But you weren't there, so. Aubrey Stone was one of the candidates who really helped.
Number seven.
Seven?
Six or seven, number seven.
Yeah. He was, he was working everything he could to help us become a city. And he wanted to be on the City Council also, but he was great helping us on that. So, definitely his name will be on the, on the clothes this evening. I think that's pretty much it, I'm not going to repeat some of the things that have already been done because we have so many wonderful things going on, the music and all the rest. So, for those who are here now and we won't see, I hope you have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, so every, absolutely, I'm sure there were people here who were at the Christmas tree lighting and, and it truly, they, they really did outdo themselves this year. And then on next door, all the ladies were talking about having frozen fever. And this isn't little girls, this is grownups who all took their kids, but they all had frozen fever. The Santa train, the live steamers estimate that they gave rides to 800 people that night. And their Santa train was in action this weekend and will be in action again Saturday and Sunday next weekend. And you can come out and ride the train and visit with Santa and enjoy candy canes and cookies and chocolate and, and whatnot. The meeting that Garrett's talking about is our 25-year effort to pass the Habitat Protection Plan, which is now in place. And like everything else, it gets a steering committee and it gets a JPA and it gets an executive director and, and of course, the business community is going to pay for it, all of our landowners who want to develop their land. The broadband conference was quite fascinating and the broadband conference came at a really good time because in addition to, in addition to people in the rural areas wanting to bring this subject to the forefront, the Department of Agriculture, USDA, is very much involved in trying to extend broadband into our rural areas. And the day before the conference, I had been to Paradise, which was really quite fascinating. It was, it was eye-opening, it was moving. I was up there for the meeting of the Secretary of the Interior and the Secretary of Agriculture and there are lessons to be learned in terms of access, as in public works. I know our SEPTED expert is in the back of the room and I pointed out to him that there are, there's some things about that fire that were completely unpredictable and the quixotic nature and the way in which it jumped things was, was scary and powerful. The, the big church where we met, the, the, the road that I used to get into Paradise, Clark Road, which is Highway 191, is also one of the main commercial corridors. And the, the Safeway Shopping Center is complete, completely burned out shelves. The McDonald's is gone, the KFC is gone, but then in the next block, the US Post Office is intact. And then in the next block, the, the big church where the meeting was held is intact. But here again, the landscaping in front of the church is all, is all burned and it burned up to this giant conifer right in the front door of the church and didn't touch the church. So, one of the neighborhoods that Sacramento Bee wrote about, one of the stories, was a guy who rescued his family from a neighborhood called Camelot, which is a little bit south of town on, on Highway 191. And as driving out of Paradise, everything on the west side is perfectly intact, summertime or late fall brown hills. On the, on the east, east side of the road, it's all burnt, up to the edge of the road. It went down the road a couple of miles in about a 50-foot stretch, jumped the road and went over and burned up homes in Paradise. It just, there's absolutely no rhyme or reason to it. There's intact buildings next door to destroyed buildings. But I think the biggest lesson probably is, is the access and the fact that our public works professionals have always had goals for how many ingress, how much ingress and egress we have into our neighborhood based on the, the size of the neighborhood and the number of homes and the, and the population. And it's really important that we continue that commitment to that kind of thing. The broadband is important because as we found out in, in the floods in 86 and 95 and 97, our cell phones don't work in a, in an environment like that. Number one, the, all the power lines were down all along both sides of the road. So, if you even do have, if you even do have power to the cell towers, then emergency services are using up the cell, the cells, available cell capacity. And so, just the average person can't really communicate. So, there has to be a way in which we figure out how to communicate with people in these rural areas when we have situations like that. It was a week of contrast and so, we did, the Big Wheels was a wonderful event. We got to roast former mayor of Folsom, Bob Holderness. And David, I'm sorry.
Well-deserved.
Well-deserved. And, and, and I have to say, you didn't get a Big Wheel because they gave Bob the steering wheel, they gave him a small wheel. Because he really is the person who came up with the idea of doing the TMA in the first place. The two concerts were phenomenal. The one at the Performing Arts Center, it was a little disconcerting to get snowed on inside, but we did. Fortunately, it sort of dried up, it didn't just stick around and melt. And then yesterday afternoon, another one of those uniquely Rancho Cordova events, the concert at Corianna by the River City Band. And the band, you would never know, those people are volunteers. They are, they have become so professional in the three or four years that we've had, that we've been entertained by them. It is, it is, it is worth every drop. The room was packed, people came and went constantly. BJ has actually bought special sort of desk chairs so that people can actually sit there and eat and have a place to put their, put their food while they're listening to the concert. Last year, I had one of the guys from downtown, from the City of Sacramento's Cultural Department come and talk to our leadership class and he couldn't get over the fact that we have concerts in a grocery store in Rancho Cordova. And I said, sweetie, it's because you don't live in Rancho Cordova. You too can be a part of our concerts in grocery stores. So, yes, in terms of adjourning tonight's meeting, we do want to recognize long-term Rancho Cordova resident Aubrey Stone. We, we did not know him when he signed up to run for City Council. We, I think the majority of us didn't realize he's, he's just in the neighborhood in front of yours.
Yeah, sort of a neighbor of mine.
And we really didn't know the man and found him an absolute delight and a wonderful gentleman, retired Air Force. And, and not only was he head of the California Black Chamber, but he also ran a radio station, which is one of the few black-owned radio stations, only, okay. I know that a couple of elections ago, I went over and got interviewed on his radio station. And then the other person that we've lost this week is Jerry Drobisch. And Jerry is the person, it's in the grapevine. Jerry is the person who started the farmhouse preschool back 30 years ago. He also was retired Air Force and there's a really nice article in the grapevine where he talked to, talked to Paul just about his recollections of being a pilot and, and whatnot. But quite frankly, 30, 30 years ago, Jerry Drobisch and I were really officially the, the only two Rancho Cordova residents who truly supported the light rail. And the, and then on the other, on the flip side, the odd thing was, light rail was opposed by the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce and the Carmichael Chamber of Commerce because they were devoted to building a bridge across the river. And they didn't think it ought to be, they didn't think any money should be spent on light rail. But Jerry located his farmhouse preschool, he got old barracks from Mather that were being relocated, and he located his farmhouse preschool across the street from Butterfield because he knew that parents, this was even before franchise tax was envisioned, he knew that parents could drop their kids at preschool and then go get on the train and go to work. And it was out there for a good 20 years and at some point in the early 2000s, he sold the property to, he retired and sold the property to, I think, the Korean Church. And they used it for a while and then built a big sanctuary and then Metro Fire did a live fire exercise on the, the original building sometime this summer. But Jerry was a very creative person who had all sorts of ideas and participated in transportation issues. He participated in all sorts of things here at the city and he will be sorely missed. So, we'll adjourn tonight's memory in their honor as well as recall our late President George H.W. Bush. Cyrus.
And Madam Mayor, I think you neglected to point out that you had a role as a conductor.
I did, actually. I did, actually, and, and I did want to, I did want to say, thank you, because you do remind me.
Feliz Navidad.
Yeah, they, I got to conduct Feliz Navidad. But they did such a variety of music yesterday at Corianna that you absolutely can't believe it. They, they closed with a, the little popular selections. But at the beginning, they did very well-known, old English carols and, and then they did a wonderful tribute to Hanukkah, which of course starts today. And then they did this fantastic performance of the five basic themes from the Messiah. And it just, they were incredible, they were really absolutely incredible. And this was the band, this was not the concert orchestra, but this was the band.
Yeah, my mother-in-law actually contacted me earlier today and said that when, you know, I become mayor and if they're still doing that, she was reserving in advance my right to conduct for herself. Apparently, it's a lifelong ambition of hers, so we might have to arrange that.
Well, good. I, I'll tell you, they gave me, they gave me a souvenir baton. I will lend it to Donna and she can use it. Cyrus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give an update on the results of our election. We had planned to certify the results tonight, but we received the official results from the county right after the council agenda was out on Friday evening. So, so we will do that officially at the next meeting and that's the reason that it is not on the agenda tonight. Along with the selection and appointment of the new mayor and vice mayor, all that will happen at the second meeting in December this month. And another quick update, just wanted to, we had a visit from a group of Brigham Young University students who visited, these are some MPA students that would like to learn about the local government. They came to the city, visited with our leadership team and we had a great meeting and a great discussion to just understand what are some of the hard issues for the young generation and the students in, at this time. And lastly, I, the mayor has visited, has visited city of Paradise, town of Paradise. I, along with a group of my colleagues, plan on going, traveling to Paradise on December 14th. The purpose of the visit is twofold, one is to see if there's any way that we could lend in, to them in the way of expertise or time and resources because they are going through such a tremendous, tremendous recovery effort at this point. And also, another one is to learn lessons, you know, what, what are some of the things that we can learn from that community in dealing with any potential tragedies or events that could face other communities? So, that's, that's planned and I will report back on the lessons that we have learnt. That's all I have, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you Cyrus. So, we'll move into our consent calendar, consent calendar items are deemed routine and can be approved with one motion unless somebody wishes to pull an item. Do we have anybody signed up to speak for a commit?
We do not.
Okay. So, does anybody need to discuss an item?
See none, I'll move the calendar.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Stacy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much.
I would just like to point out too, that $4.15 million went to Rancho Cordova firms out of these contracts. So, I just want to thank the city for doing a lot more outreach in the region and pulling in Rancho firms.
Thank you. Okay, 14.1.
The title of 14.1 is a resolution declaring a protest hearing and authorizing the mailing of a property owner ballot relating to the imposition of an annual stormwater utility fee for the Sun Ridge Village project.
So, do you want to announce the?
I have, I have not received any written protests and to my knowledge, there are no speakers here.
Is there anybody in the audience tonight who came to speak to this item? Okay, seeing, I, I should probably open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public hearing and ask again if there's anybody who came to speak to this item. And I don't see anybody jumping up, so we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to Stacy.
I have nothing further to say.
Great, then. You're going to mail out the ballot.
Oh, I think Elizabeth.
Elizabeth is going to mail the ballot.
Yes.
Okay, great. Wonderful, thank you very much. Item 15.1.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Don't we need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move the item.
No, you're right, thank you. Yep.
Okay, motion and a second. Thank you. Roll call, Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much, motion carries. You said it would be short, Elizabeth, I was just making it really short. Okay. Item 15.1.
15.1, the title is a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Bond Opportunities for Land Development, BOLD program and establishing guidelines for the use of alternative land secured financing programs. Kim.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Kim Duran, Cara Giorgio, Administrative Services Director, and I'm joined tonight by, with Michelle Mingay, our Senior Finance Analyst. And we are here this evening to ask if the City Council authorize a resolution that would enable the city to participate in the Bond Opportunities for Land Development Program, also referred to as BOLD. BOLD is another means for this Rancho Cordova development community to finance infrastructure, public facilities and development fees through a pooled bond issuance handled by the California Municipal Finance Authority. Pooled financing programs such as BOLD are ideal for project financing of less than $5 million since they provide efficiencies and cost savings that make smaller financing cost-effective. The city currently participates in another pooled financing program, the Statewide Community Infrastructure Program, referred to as SKIP, which is similar to BOLD. The two programs differ in that SKIP imposes an assessment lien as determined by an engineer's report, whereas BOLD issues a special tax via the formation of a Community Facilities District, or a CFD, which is the most common financing mechanism that, for new development in the city of Rancho Cordova. Once approved by the City Council, BOLD would require little involvement from the City Council. The CMFA and its consultant team will form and approve each CFD. The BOLD finance team is the same team that the city currently works with on its own financings and includes Jones Hall for Bond Counsel, Goodwin Consulting Group for Special Tax Services and Piper Jaffray as underwriter. Ongoing administration of the BOLD program and all required annual disclosures to bond investors will be handled by CMFA in consultation with developers. In addition to the requested approval of BOLD, staff is asking that the City Council also approve. also approve the recommended guidelines for use of alternative land-secured financing programs. These recommended guidelines are intended to provide a framework for how the city will work with developers to determine the most efficient manner in which to finance public infrastructure and/or development impact fees. I'll take a brief moment to walk through what was included as attachment to, to the staff report, which highlights what those policies, recommendations are. The first of which is that the city would generally recommend the use of an alternative land-secured financing program such as SCIP or BOLD for financings below $5 million. Financings in excess of $5 million would continue to be done by the city through a CFD. A sizing model must be completed for any land-secured financing request and must not result in a total effective tax rate in excess of 1.75% of current market value, including all special taxes. In addition, in accordance with the city's debt policy, all bond issuances shall have at least a four-to-one property value rate to public lien ratio. The SCIP program, one of the land-secured financing programs, can only be used to finance the city's transportation impact fee and cannot be used to finance public infrastructure. The BOLD program, which is proposed before you this evening, can be used to finance both public infrastructure and development impact fees, but cannot include pay-as-you-go financing. And finally, any development impact fees funded through the issuance of these bonds must have an active CIP program, which guarantees that the monies collected will be spent within the three-year window. And the, and no term can, bonds issued by either program exceed 30 years. So those are the recommended guidelines that we are proposing to follow. This would make it easier for our colleagues in the development industry to understand how we're going to view their requests and make it consistent across the board. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for staff? Okay, we don't have any. Did anybody else come to speak to this item? Okay.
Come on, the infrastructure financing doesn't get everybody excited? We can finance a lot of roads with this, Mita.
Elizabeth is excited.
Can't repave them.
Okay. So are we ready for a motion?
I'll move the item.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. So we're on to item 16.1, which is an update on crime statistics from the Rancho Cordova
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the Uniform Crime Reporting for Rancho Cordova for the years 2017 back to 2013. And also, we'll be talking about a little bit of crime statistics. So this is just the agenda that we'll go through, but please feel free to jump in whenever you have some questions. I'll try to keep it at a high overview, but feel free to stop me at any time, and then at the end, we will have a separate section for questions. We're going to talk about the update on the citywide crime data, like I said, between 2013 to 2017. We're going to then break out, talk about violent crime data and property crime, how population changes affects that, and then a crime rate based on population change, and then wrapping it up with comparison to other jurisdictions. So if you recall, last year, we came to you with our first UCR update, as me as Chief of Police. We went back and used all the known data that we had that was accurate, which was back down to 2011. So that period was 2011 to 2016. This year, we're going to start standardizing on a five-year trend window, which is an industry standard to look at for crime trends. So this, this one will be a little bit different. It'll be on a five-year, and then we'll be using that going forward. So if you don't know what Uniform Crime Reporting is, it's actually a standard set forth by the FBI that most agencies in the United States actually report crime data in a standardized way. So it's broken down into two types of crimes, violent crime, or categories, violent crime categories and property crime categories. It's based on reported, actual reports that have been reported to the police department. And just to put it in perspective, in 2017, we had 42,000 citizen-generated calls for service, and out of that, there were 6,000 total crime reports taken. And the Part I crimes, which we're going to be talking about this evening, were 29% of those reported crimes. So this is the crime trends for 2013 to 2017. If you look at the chart, back in 2013, we had 352 reported crimes that were part of the violent crime category, which is made up of homicide, sexual assault, robbery, and aggravated assault. If you look at the trend, which is a better way to gauge versus looking from year to year with small changes, you look at the actual overall trend, you'll see we are trending downward. We do have a tick upward this year in the violent crime category, but the number of crimes in this category is so small that small changes make major differences to the So to break it down more specifically, homicide remained unchanged, sexual assaults remained unchanged. We did notice an uptick in robbery. We had 11 additional robberies in 2017 than we did 2016, and we had, excuse me, 49 additional aggravated assaults from 2017 from 2016. Total crime was 60 additional total crime for violent crime for years 2016 from 20, or 2017 from 2016. So most of that change was all, in the, obviously, all the change was all for robbery and assault. There were 11 more robberies that were mostly all related to commercial robberies. For example, we had at least four additional robberies of one of the big box stores in town that was basically a shoplifting that there was forced to use, so it changes into a robbery. But like I said earlier, smaller adjustments make big changes in the percentages. As far as the assault, aggravated assaults, a majority of those were increasing, an increase in domestic violence. Assault was a deadly weapon with not a firearm, so like a baseball bat or a knife or something else that would have caused great bodily injury, and an increase in firearm-related So breaking into property crimes, they're basically the burglaries, the larcenies, and motor vehicle theft. We did have a trend-down decrease over the last five years, which is a 35% decrease in crime. If you notice, there is a dotted line on there, and that is, as we previously talked about, and I'll get into more in a few minutes, of, we did find an accounting error on how we're reporting our stolen vehicles. And so I'll talk about more detail on that, but if those were reported correctly in the last two years, we would have showed a further decrease in the property crimes over the last two years. So specifically, burglaries are down, larcenies are down, motor vehicle thefts, per the report, were up, arson's were down, and overall, were down in total property crimes. As I indicated earlier, there was an accounting error that we found as we were looking at the statistics. We noticed that the motor vehicle thefts were not being reported properly by the, it's a manual process that's being done, and it's done on paper. And when we report UCR stats to the state, it's based on the month that it's actually reported, not on when the crime occurs. So these were, since it was a manual process, we found up to a six-month backlog in reports, which caused several of the reports to be reported in the wrong year. If these numbers were shown accurately, we actually would have shown a decrease in motor vehicle theft from 2016 to 2017. The 2016 number should have read actually 182, and the 2017 number should have read 131. So overall, we would have shown a larger decrease in property crimes. It would have shown a 13% reduction from 26 to 2017. That has been fixed. We are now doing it all in-house at RCPD and reporting them manually, and we have a new records management system that should be online early next year that will automate the process. But for now, we are up to date. So that two-year window where this snafu happened, that won't happen in the future. Together, total crimes for the year, we are slightly trending upward with, we don't take into account the motor vehicle theft reporting issue. We were 2% up for 2016 and 2017, but overall, we're 32.8% down over the five-year trend window. Taking into adjustment, the adjustment for the motor vehicle theft misreporting, we would actually be at a 2.5% reduction from 2016 to 2017. As we talked, last year, population's very important to look at. That's not a status quo number with a growing city like ours. We have the 9% population growth occurring here in the five-year window, so it will affect the crime trends as we have to factor that number in. Best practice is to base your crime stats on a per 1,000 individual. So when we recalculate the numbers, it actually shows that we're going to have a larger decrease of, or a larger crime decrease over the five-year period. We did switch the way we are factoring the population changes. Last year, we used the Department of Finance numbers. This year, we're actually using the FBI estimate numbers, which is part of the UCR reporting to keep it consistent. So the numbers you see here will be the ones that are reported by the FBI, and all jurisdictions would have access to them. The numbers are pretty consistent to what the Department of Finance, it's just on timing, it may be a little bit off within a couple hundred here or there, but the numbers are pretty consistent. And as you can see, we've had a 9% growth. So when taking population into consideration, over the last five-year period, we actually showed a 38.3% drop in crime, which is actually higher than last year's, 31.5%, but that is mostly because of 2013. We had a very high year of crime, and since then, we've been slowly going down in the crime rate. Crime is pretty much, taking into consideration of population, is pretty, status quo, pretty flat this year as it was last year. If we do the adjustments for, readjusting the numbers for the accurate stolen vehicle reporting, we'd actually show a decrease in crime of 41.7% over the last five years, and crime would be down to 22 crimes per 1,000, where without the, with the numbers as reported, there were 23.3 crimes per 1,000. Taking a little look forward, we are, we do have two, three-quarters of 2018 crime stats already done. We do show a further decrease of 8.4% decrease in violent crimes for this year of 2018, and a 1.2% decrease of property crimes, and with an overall 2.5 decrease, reported Part I crimes in the third quarter of 2018. So if the trend stands, we should be also looking at another downward trend for next And this is our comparison chart. It shows us where we are compared in the region with the other law enforcement agencies and cities. So as it was last year, we are showing, we are, Rancho Cordova is the largest, we experienced the largest decrease in any jurisdiction over the last five-year period. Again, the number is not adjusted for the stolen vehicle. These are actually the numbers reported to the FBI. If we did adjust the numbers, that last number that would be 23.3 would actually be a 20.0, or 22.0, I'm sorry. As you can see, we are underneath Sacramento, we're underneath Citrus Heights, and we sit right above the unincorporated area of Sacramento. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions, or would like to get into more detail on any of this?
Donald? I was just going to thank you. Since you started doing it in this format, it's been a lot more helpful for me, at least, visualizing it. I think in years past, I would, I would make the mistake of, I think, over-analyzing these and thinking that, just because numbers go down or they go up, that you make the conclusion that, you know, more crimes reported or more crimes happening could be a good or a bad thing, depending on, you know, if people are just giving up on reporting them because nobody's responding, right? That doesn't mean we got safer, right? So, but it, it's always eye-opening to, to look at the trends and see where they're going, but great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Always excellent. So I'm going to go through a couple things, and you tell me what, what we're thinking about.
Okay.
Right now, a lot of the business owners are feeling the pinch due to the homeless, the vagrants that are running into the different businesses, especially near like Fight Circle and that area. Do we have a strategy to protect the business owners? Because they're, they're running into a lot more, people breaking into their overall spaces, people camp, in camping out. Do we have, they're feeling a lot more pressure than they did, had in the past? And what do you, would, do we have a strategy to kind of combat that?
We do. And specifically to Fight Circle, we've actually met with them and went out there and talked to their, the building owners, and discussed several strategies that we can help them with and, and give them guidance on SEPTED principles to change like the design of the area. We've also deployed civilian CSO officers, volunteers to be high-profile in their areas, patrol officers to be high-profile in those areas. So we do have a pretty decent strategy that has been proven to work in two separate areas of the city so far, that has dealt with some of those, those lower-level crimes like vandalism, things like that. But yes, we do have a very good strategy to work that. And if you have something specific that you want me to meet with, Tina Aldama, who you met last time, she's definitely our point person on that.
Okay.
Chris, we've all used the term SEPTED. Please define it.
Crime prevention through environmental design.
Yeah.
So that's when we take out the bushes and put the lights up?
Yes.
And play the orchestra music just to make sure that the people can get to hear it all night long?
That's part of it. But we actually, with Rancho Cordova Police Department, we have a pretty comprehensive solution to dealing with the issues that you mentioned. And like I said, it's been proven to work in two different areas here where we've had some major crime areas, and we deployed this, this process into it, working with the building landlords and the owners, and it's been very successful.
Okay. Excellent. Have you, how do you feel the overall security of the business, different business regions are going in Rancho Cordova right now? When it comes to more like crime, the, in that, in those areas, like near the targets and safeways and stuff like that, how are you seeing that overall crime statistic in those areas? Are they going down? Are they starting to trend better? What do you see?
The area of the Foz is still one of the hotspots for, for Rancho Cordova. We've actually just deployed a new intelligence-led policing project to focus specifically on that area, and we're basically bringing all of our resources to bear to try to adjust those crime stats. They're still fairly low. It's not really high, but when you look at the city overall, it stands out. And so it is an area we're going to be focusing on. The crime we see is a lot of shoplifting, a lot of trespassing, things like that, not necessarily violent crime. So it's more of the, the lower-end type stuff, but it does affect quality of life. So those are the issues we're trying to focus on. So currently, our day shift watch commander is spearheading that project, and we're just getting it kicked off. We just started about a week ago, so he's putting plans together. And to really focus on that whole area to try to make a dent in those numbers.
All right. Last thing, I know we, there were some issues in the release, early release in July of 2017, and I saw our numbers spike with violent crimes, and it looks like it's a trend. Is there a reason that you know of why it would do that? I mean, as Donald said, numbers can mean that more people are reporting it and stuff like that, but do you, is it due to that, or is it due to some other issue that you know of that why we spike, it seems to spike another 40 or 50 violent crimes? Like it almost goes in a trend of up and down and up and down.
Yeah, I, I noticed the trend of up and down, and we dissected the data the best we could. And I, as I said, I have the specifics for actually this last year for 2017 and 2016 the difference. And what we noticed almost entirely, it was the, there was 11 additional robberies, and again, nine of those were to, to businesses. So they're commercial robberies. So out of that, most of those were actually shoplifting that involved violence, so somebody didn't want to just give up. They actually fought the security. That would have turned it into a robbery versus a shoplift. So we're seeing the difference there with those numbers. And also, with aggravated assaults, as I said before, we saw quite a big increase, actually. The numbers are small, so the percentage increase looks big, but they're, they're small numbers in the scheme of things, but there was 49 additional aggravated assaults, which there's 35 different crimes that make up an aggravated assault, that category. But the biggest increases that we saw were domestic violence. We did see an increase there. We saw the assault with a deadly weapon that was not a firearm. We saw 11% increase in those. And so that would have been like a baseball bat or a knife or something like that. And then firearm-related charges, we actually saw 13 additional from 2016. It was 30 in 2016, 43 in 2017. And so those would be assault with deadly weapon with a firearm or some other crime with a firearm involved. Those made up the biggest difference in, in that category. We did notice early on, we had some gang issue pop back in, into Rancho Cordova, some young, young gang members were starting to do business here, and we immediately restratized and deployed our resources out, and that has been dealt with.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. When you said that, I was like, a gang tried to come back in?
Yeah.
Into town. That's usually what that involves. Okay. You know what? These numbers are excellent. Donald and I were remarking that we'd love to see this, you know, maybe one the month, it's our biggest budget item, and it's the thing that most of my constituents and business owners ask the most about. So thank you for your time.
Oh, absolutely.
Can I clarify that? I appreciate the crime statistics, but I'd also like to spend just more time talking about initiatives. What, what is the crime suppression unit working on? What are your successes and focuses and those types of things? And practices and explain some things. I know I talked to you a while back about the length of time in officer-involved juke. I know I talked to you a while back about the length of time in officer-involved shootings before reports and things like that come out and the length, and you really helped me understand that. But I think all of us have a lot to learn about what we're spending our money on in the police department that you guys are, so I would just like to be, not just updated on statistics, but just have an opportunity to have workshops to talk about this stuff so that I better understand what we're doing.
We have been putting plans in motion just to do exactly that.
I appreciate that.
So we can talk a lot more frequently versus several big times each year.
Sure.
And believe it or not, crime suppression does really fall right in line with these crime stats, just to let you know. They, we use a program, Intelligence-led Policing, where we look at this data on a weekly basis, and we try to determine what's causing the crime to go up or down, or what's affecting different trends in our region, what crimes we're seeing out there. And so the CSU team is instrumental in being a reactionary arm that when we see a trend, they'll roll, roll out and be very proactive into trying to stop that trend from continuing. Hence, the gang issue that we saw, we caught that very early on. They went out there and dealt with it, and they are not alone. They bring in patrol and all these other resources, POP, everybody else. But CSU is very instrumental in, in making these crime stats the way they are.
Thank you.
And also along those lines, this is, if I'm not mistaken, this is the fourth time this year that we've been talking about public safety and issues related to that.
And Garrett, you started about a year and a half ago, but normally, we would talk about police when the contract was about to come up. And that was pretty much, or maybe we'd get this report once a year, and then we would, it's 18 months until the contract's up, what do we want to do? Those were the workshops that we had the first few years here. So I do appreciate the, the, the more timely reflections this year.
And I do believe Assistant Chief Sheldon should be ready soon with a report back on red light cameras, too. So that'll probably be our next presentation, to go into very detailed information for council to see.
Okay, David.
Well, colleagues, I would also encourage you to take advantage of the right-along opportunities that are offered by the police department. Those can be quite informative, writing on with the sergeant or, or a junior officer or a special unit, whatever the case may be. I've found those to be incredibly educational over the years. You can also attend their briefings, particularly the Intelligence-led Policing briefing is, is pretty interesting, to see how they're actually working with all the data that's coming into the police department from various sources, including us and our residents, about priorities we have in neighborhoods, seeing how they deal with that on an ongoing basis in a briefing. That's, that's pretty helpful. I would also encourage you to call and text the chief. He is, he is very responsive. I think he and I are probably in touch on nearly a daily basis. On average, certainly probably every other day on, on one issue or another. And I was reluctant to, to engage with him quite at that level, but he has encouraged me every step of the way, saying, every bit of, you know, communication I'm giving him is basically feeding into that Intelligence-led Policing model. And, and it's gratifying for me to see responses to things that I see or my family see or my friends see as we go about business here in Rancho Cordova. And so I'm always encouraging our residents, you know, if you see it, call about it. If you have any doubt whatsoever, if something doesn't look right, call about it. 911 is there for that purpose. So many of our residents will say, well, you know, just, it didn't seem like it was really 911, like 911 should be reserved for when Godzilla shows up, you know? That's not what 911 is reserved for. 911 is for a ton of stuff. Let the 911 operator sort it out, you know, what, how this, how this ought to be handled. Let the officers on duty sort out how it handled. It's not left to the judgment of our residents. Just call. If you see something unusual you don't like, call. And that certainly applies as well to code enforcement, public works, anything else in the city. Because our officers, unfortunately, and we and our staff cannot be everywhere, see everything, respond to everything, but our citizens can. By definition, they're there, where they're living, going about what they're doing in our community. They're the, they're the eyes of the city of Rancho Cordova. We just need them to be connected to the rest of us. So chief, anytime you get a, you know, an opportunity to send that message, I hope you're sending sort of the same one, which is, if in doubt of any kind, call.
I absolutely do, and thank you, Councilman Sander. I would like to comment on that same topic, is that was one of the ideas behind neighborhood policing, to have that connection that you and I share with the entire city. So people know they can call their officer, they can call one of us to report something that's going on. It may not be necessarily a crime in progress, but it's an issue that they see in their neighborhood. Those are the type of things that don't necessarily show up through Intelligence-led Policing or crime stats, but they're things that affect people's lives. And those are the, that's how we have to have these relationships formed, so we can actually get that information.
So yeah, ride-alongs, briefings, use your mobile device safely for its best purpose. The crime stats are unbelievable. I mean, to be down 37, or if they were correctly reported back when, it would have been 41 percent in this time period. That's an unbelievable change, and you just have to sort of look at that graph, and you can see, that's a remarkable adjustment that has occurred there. I think we've got a lot to be proud of. We still have some stuff to work on, but it's going to get harder, frankly, to drive it down a lot more, given where we are. We're getting, we're getting to, you know, fewer and fewer crimes per capita. Working that down will, will be a challenge, but that's a good challenge to have. And we have a very creative chief right now, a very creative force, doing a lot of very unique things, I think, in our region with regard to policing. So we've got a lot to be proud of, and I certainly hope we talk about the success we've had. Because all too often in the past, as Donald mentioned, we don't talk about this all that often, and we generally haven't bragged about our past successes, although this, this trend line extends back. This is the latest segment of a, of a period of success for us in public safety. And as we, you know, as our community goal number one is improve image, this is the thing that has dragged us down over the years. We've been inappropriately labeled, and this is the data basically refuting that opinion. So this is something we should all be very proud of and talk about a lot. But thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Wow.
One thing, the, using the Measure H comprehensive community, our new CSU.
Oh, yeah.
Command Reviations, sorry about that. That was money that we got from Measure H money, and that's another good way of using the citizens' money. And when we started in 2015, we said, what do you want to spend your tax money on? And that's one of the things that was, one of the first things is safety in the police, and we've been doing that. I use, I shop at Walmart quite often, and just looking at the difference now in what it was. And how much of a difference is, do you have a new store manager there, relatively new?
No, he's the same store manager we have for a little while now.
Okay. Because it's, it's, when you go there to the store, there's no one out there on the tables or trying to get anything except someone trying to get a signature for a petition. But that's a different story, rather than having people out there trying to get money, trying to get that. And you also don't see that many in the parking lot either. I haven't seen any for a while. I'm sure they're there, but you don't have anything that you park, and the first thing you do when you open the door is somebody going like this. That's not there. And that's a tremendous difference on the Walmart. Now granted, we've got some people that come in from downtown wherever and get off at the, at the light we all come across and do some burglary or, you know, and it frustrates me when you have, a felony is now over $950 or something like that.
Yes.
Anything less than that is not, that's completely ridiculous, because you can spell, you know, sell something that much and then be back on the streets again the next day or the same day. And that's, I wish there was something that could be done with the legislation that would change that back to at least a smaller amount before you start getting via felony, because the stores, people don't think about it, but they sure do make a difference. Their profit margin drops very quickly when you start having some kids in there, just a few toys. That doesn't mean much. Well, it does. So thank you for working with the stores and the managers and like that, because I think that's what's making the big difference on that also.
Thank you very much, and we do have a very good relationship with Walmart. We work that area quite frequently. Also, some of the notices that you've seen out there has been a direct reflection of CSU and our HOT team, actually. So a lot of those, those issues are being caused by homeless or transients in this area, and the HOT team going out and doing that outreach that we've been doing has made a huge difference for that, that specific area.
Good, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, really, it, obviously, the picture is that you're approaching it on several different fronts, and, and that's what's really making the difference. Did anybody else want to speak to this item tonight? Okay, then we want to thank you. And so all of this information is on, probably on your website and on our website now. And we are at the end of the meeting. Do we have any future agenda items that anybody wants to put on the agenda, gentlemen? Okay, then we're going to adjourn this meeting tonight in memory of Aubrey Stone and Jerry Drobisch, and in honor of our late President George H.W. Bush. Thank you all very much. Good night.